... being late, getting going, but I'd like to call to order this meeting of District 116, business meeting of District 116 for April the 17th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member, excuse me, Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Rollins Gay.
Here.
And President Dunn.
Here. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
No.
All right. There will be a call for an exec session after tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing specific personnel-related issues. And I did that in the wrong order, I'm sorry. Citizen statements. We have some citizen statements. If you wish to address the board this evening, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet and submit that to Lori, our recording secretary. And while you're considering that, I'd like to recognize Jay Morris for running the cameras for us tonight.
Thank you, Jay.
Jay's always a star. So I appreciate that, so that folks at home can watch us. And I do have some requests, we'll start through on them. And would remind everyone that five-minute maximum, please, and I will read off the name of when you come up, and when you do come up, make sure the mic is on, Lori, can you just turn it on, so it's ready to go? Or Matt, thank you. And please give your name when you get up there, and go ahead. So first is Amy Felte, and after that will be Keith Harris.
I just wanted to come and say that it still does my heart good to know that we're working toward different discipline systems, and I want to contend and commend the board, the administration, the staff, the teachers, everyone, for working toward what's best for kids. I just came away from two conferences where we were studying systemic problems with systems in which the people that are supposed to be served aren't always served. And I want to say that as you look at the statistics and all about discipline actions and what happens with students and suspensions and high school graduation and access to classes and so on, that the data you're looking at are the markers that people are saying we need to look at to see if all kids are served. These are complicated issues, and it's hard to do this close examination. It's really uncomfortable, but it's absolutely necessary, because these kids that we're working with are the adults coming up in just a few years, and they have to be ready to step into life choices that they can make with some confidence and with a good educational background. So I wanted to say that in the state of Illinois, you know, we have that Illinois School Code, the long-evolving school code that changes all the time. And one of the things in that is the phrase "in loco parentis," which is, of course, "in place of the parent." And I was thinking about that yesterday morning, and thinking about the school board meeting coming tonight, and thought, that phrase "in loco parentis" is an obligation and a charge to the schools, it's not an option. And it means that the staff, the teachers, the administrators, any responsible adults, the board members have to be, they are obliged to act in the place of parents when kids are in the school system. So to me, as a parent and as a retired teacher, that means that the care and advocacy for each student has to be as strong at school as if a parent, the biological parent or the caretaker, was at the, in the school with the child each day, because we are there with the kids each day. And we have to promote that growth and independence and learning for each child. In Urbana, you've looked at the data, and it shows that not all of our youth are benefiting from that kind of care and individual advocacy that would keep them in school if there was a parent right there beside them, working for the kids. And we are the parents working for them, all of us in the systems. So I think that taking a system that removes kids from classes, that lowers graduation rate, that pulls them out of contact with the healthy building of relationships with their peers, that looks at any root problems they might have, this has to be done. This is what a parent would do, a caring parent. So I applaud you once again for your work. I think what you're proposing with a system of restorative justice, system of counseling for kids, a system of training for all of the adults and all of us in the systems, and pulling the community in like this, is the best step you could take. I just want to congratulate you and say, if I can do something, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you. Keith, and then after Keith, Brian Lake.
My name is Keith Harris, and I'm now a four-year survivor of throat cancer, so I'm incredibly glad that I can speak to you all, much less at all. I'm privileged to work with a variety of high school students here in the community, at all four of the high schools that are a part of this. And as I look at the report, the secondary district discipline data, I'm gravely disturbed by those statistics and grateful that you all are paying attention to that. I think that I'm glad that this district is willing to look at the elephant in the room that no one wants to talk about, and perhaps that elephant is even a white elephant in the room. What I'm not here to do is to judge people and say, white is bad and black or brown is good. But what I do want to say is that racial discrimination, racial bias is alive and well. I go to Starbucks as much as anyone, and my service has always been excellent, especially these last couple days. So we don't really have to go far, find examples of racial bias and discrimination, both subconscious and conscious. The reality is, we are failing, whether we want to or not, our African-American and Latino students. Those statistics tell a really powerful and painful story. I'd also want you to know I'm as resistant to change as anyone. I kind of like things to say, I like what I know, and I know what I like, but this system really is failing a significant portion of our children. The given's that we all operate on are not the same. No critique for the people that are in the room, but the citizens gathered here are not representative of the school system. And it's not that African-American or Latino parents don't care, they're disheartened, they're disenfranchised, it's a system that they have swam in since their kids entered school, and why even try? I think the last thing that I would say is that, again, I'm grateful, as a pastor and one that works with students, both in high school and college, that you as a board are willing to wrestle and change to a restorative justice system, and perhaps look at some of the biases that we're aware of and not, so that the statistics a year, a few years from now, might be way different than what they are now. Thank you for your time and attention.
Brian, and then after Brian, Stephen Manette.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts. My name is Brian Lake, I'm an elementary instructional coach in the district. And as an instructional coach, I have the pleasure of experiencing teaching and learning in many different classrooms facilitated by a variety of teachers with different backgrounds and experiences. And the common thread is that learning is happening. It's not always perfectly designed to fully engage every learner through every moment, but when we put our heads together, we're getting closer. A heavy part of my coaching centers around refreshing, creating, strengthening student inquiry in the learning environment, providing space, time, tools, skills that students need to ask meaningful questions, and find and evaluate and analyze resources to help them synthesize their own answers. It means that teachers are putting more effort into behind-the-scenes work and less into rehearsing for the spotlight. Facilitating learning, not directing, takes different energy. More attention to background knowledge and prior skills and strengths of our students, more attention to individual needs and how they will determine each student's role in the inquiry, more troubleshooting in the moment as the process is much less scripted than that of packaged learning programs. Again, it's a process, but one with lots of partners and stakeholders who have ownership and therefore are more invested. That's all we teachers are asking for from you. A partnership or we have ownership too. Inquiry in the classroom is a clear message to our students that what they bring to the table matters and can significantly shape the process and the outcomes. It can be as respectful and differentiated as it is messy and unrefined, but it is a partnership. We are here because we know the discipline disparities. We are challenged daily by the task of trying to reach and engage more of our students. We're not questioning the need for change, we're not arguing the degree of urgency, we are not trying to sabotage an effort. We want to strengthen it. We want to be more included in the process of asking the meaningful questions and finding the most sustainable answers, because we are the part of the team on the ground responsible for facilitating the solution. We have a wealth of expertise, experience, knowledge, and skills to share with more than just our students. With that said, I sat through the strategic plan presentation two weeks ago to the board and reminisced about the process from 10 years ago, in which I, as a five-year teacher then, felt like I had a voice that was valued, as I worked closely with an action team that was tasked with developing a shared mission. I was eager to hear my invitation to the new planning process, and through the presentation two weeks ago, I heard many potential partners and stakeholders named, but not teachers explicitly stated. In the moment, I tried to check my bias, and wanted to convince myself that teachers didn't need to be explicitly mentioned, because obviously. But then the timeline was presented, the action teams for stakeholder input are set for only the summer months, as far as I understand. A time when many of us schedule vacations, time with family, time to do the self-care that is preached to us all year, but that's not always our first priority when we have students in front of us. Will those of us who can commit to these action teams be deemed the ones who are most dedicated to the cause? Will those who choose self and family care so that they can be fully prepared to give their best to our students in the fall, be told not to complain about the outcomes if they chose not to be part of the process? Will we be closer to or farther from feeling like a partnership again with shared ownership and investment? Is there a way to at least extend this part of the plan into the school year to open up the opportunity for more voices? And if there are misconceptions that we have, we would love to address those with you as well. I hope that you all can spend some time with these questions before approving a plan that may not be truly welcoming to all partners. Thank you.
While Stephen and Manette are coming forward, I want to remind you, if anyone wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod sheet. This is the last one that I have.
Steve Vaughn, Urbana, and I will now read all of the school code that was mentioned earlier. No, I will not. Because I only have five minutes, and I'm not that fast a reader. So I gather, by the way, I'm a parent, my son's a freshman at UHS, and I am also the union rep for UEA, I work for the Illinois Education Association. All right, introductions. When I first heard this issue emerge, one of the first questions I had was, well, what about the parent-teacher advisory committee? And no one seemed to know what I was talking about at that point. I asked some administrators, and I gather it actually came up at a most recent board session. And it is, in fact, one of the board's two standing committees. There is board policy language that created a parent-teacher advisory committee. In policy, it is 2:150, the section on committees. And this was passed in 2016, and that's as it should be, because the statute that required such a committee was passed just prior to that, and districts were to comply by September of that year. So you guys were months ahead. As a union guy, I spent a lot of time looking at language, and what's interesting is that the statute and your policy are a little bit different. So the statute reads that the purpose of the student disciplinary, or rather, the parent-teacher advisory committee is to, quote, "establish and maintain this committee to develop with the school board or governing body school policy guidelines on pupil discipline." And I want to point out that language "with" the school board. So this parent-teacher advisory committee, which, again, it's not clear to me what its current status is, but it is tasked with, among other things, developing with the board, policy around student discipline. And it's to annually review that policy. Now, the difference I was alluding to in the board policy is that, unlike statute, board policy put it this way, this committee assists in the development of student behavior policy and procedure. Now, maybe I'm splitting hairs, but I kind of do that for a living, and I bet if I took it to an arbitrator, I could make a case that there's a difference between "with" and "assisting." And the statute is "with," and the statute, and thereby the state, seems to be encouraging Urbana to embrace its collaborative self. It's encouraging Urbana to do this in a way that Urbana typically has done things, which is to work with their staff. But there's an important piece here. It's not simply the teacher advisory committee, it's the parent-teacher advisory committee. So it's not just one set of stakeholders that feel like they've been left out of this process by not engaging a robust or even a parent-teacher advisory committee in the process of developing this new discipline policy. Who knows these kids and the needs, discipline and otherwise, better than the parents and the teachers that work with them every day? So I want to encourage you to, you know, rethink the use and necessity of engaging the parent-teacher advisory committee in this context, and Manette in a minute will be speaking to that. One last thing. I hope not to hear, again, any reports of administrators suggesting that this response is merely an emotional response, or a reflection of fragility, or stubbornness, or resistance to change. Those are condescending and dismissive, and, again, do not speak to the kind of collaboration necessary. These people, well, first of all, two things are wrong with that. If I represented a bunch of male pipe fitters, my guess is, when they had a reasonable objection to unilateral changes in policy, nobody would suggest that their response was emotional. Right? It's a discipline dominated by women. And too often, when they resist, they are, it's written off as an emotional response, so that really sticks in my craw. But I'll tell you the second thing that bugs me about it. As a very emotional person, my boys will tell you, I cry all the time. They're constantly looking in my eyes going, "Are you crying?" And half the time, I am, right? So, but I'll tell you something else. I almost always win every argument I have with my kids, too. So they will recognize that you can be emotional and very reasonable, and make legitimate objections to a bad idea, or a good idea that was done without you at the same time. So I really feel like if we're going to move forward together, it's important that this, the fact that these people showed up tonight, the fact that they are asking to work with you on this process, does not get written off as, "I don't want to change because I don't like to change," or just an emotional response, because that is not it. Nobody believes in the need to make the positive changes necessary more than the people that work for you. But they want to do it with you, like we always have, like we've always had. So at that, Manette will take over.
So I'm kind of a rule follower. I'm Manette Creutz, Urbana resident, future Urbana parent, employee, and UEA president. Good evening. While there are countless things that I could speak to the board about this evening on behalf of UEA membership, I'm here to focus on one thing: time. Members of the board, we are officially out of it. We are out of time. Yes, there may be 28 days of school left, but there are only five Mondays, which is when secondary disciplinary brainstorming sessions have occurred. To think that we can restructure an entire disciplinary system in five Mondays, which equates to five hours, is absolutely ludicrous. UMS spent nearly an entire school year rewriting their building mission and vision statements. Does anyone honestly think that we can build an effective disciplinary system that will truly address and diminish the racial disparities in our district in a measly five hours? I hope and would think not. At UMS, we are just now beginning the phase of planning. To date, there is still no actual, presentable, let alone executable, plan. In order to continue our work towards building a strong, solid, and truly well-thought-out plan, we need more time. In order to recruit, hire, and properly train staff, as an inevitable and essential component of this yet-to-be-developed plan, we need more time. In order to genuinely include parents and students in the planning process, who have yet to have a seat at the table, we need more time. To not recognize that time has run out for the 1819 rollout, and to keep aimlessly working under an end-of-year deadline with no set parameters is not transformative. It is a recipe for chaos, disaster, and failure. In turn, I ask you to halt the process and require central office administration to take the 1819 school year to do this right. UEA has made the first step in starting this year-long process for you, by recruiting and finalizing the members for the parent-teacher advisory committee that you just heard about from Steve. While not all of them are present here tonight, I would like to acknowledge those that were able to come by reading our 11 teacher member names. From early childhood, Tammy, Jamie Tanner; from King, Shalonda Carr; from Wiley, Molly Pankow; from Thomas Payne, Martha Turukian; from Dr. Williams, Kelly Mills; from Lille, Wendy Wertz; from Yankee Ridge, Don Madison; two reps from the middle school, Candace Cobb and Alicia, I was going to say your old name, Alicia Snell, from the high school, Brietta Morton, and Yvonne Alvarez-Cortez. My comments to you this evening have all been centered on time. In this case, time is not a want or a wish, it's a need, it's a must. Members of the board, the ball is in your court. So again, I ask for you to halt the process and require central office administration to take the 1819 school year to thoughtfully and purposefully develop all the key players and components that it will take to implement a secondary disciplinary system that is built for success. Thank you.
Are there others that wish to address the board? I want to thank everyone for your input tonight. We'll move on, as I indicated, we will have an exec session after this evening's meeting to discuss specific issues of personnel. A motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motions carried. We have an agenda for this evening. We have a commendation for this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Erica Cooper-Patton. She's a teacher at Dr. Preston Williams Elementary Junior, Junior Elementary School. She was awarded a $550 grant through the Urbana Arts, Public Arts Grant Project. The name of the grant is Collaboration Through Art Mentors, where they bring artists in to work with students and in classrooms. So congratulations to Ms. Cooper-Patton.
We have no policy review or independent communications beyond what we've already heard this evening. There's been some questions as to what that item on our agenda is all about, communications, because in fact, the board members have received numerous communications that have been sent to us as individuals. The purpose of the communications item on the agenda, it's actually a holdover from pre-electronic days, I think, more than anything else, when, and pre-ability to copy things. When people would send a letter to the board, they would send it to central office, and then it would be distributed to us at the meeting, and that's why we have communications on this, on this agenda. In my 30-some years on the board, I've seen it used five or six times, all in the, maybe the first 10 years I was on the board. I haven't seen it used much at all since then. So just, just so folks are aware, that we're recognizing that we have, in fact, received a lot of communication, but it comes to us as individuals, or in the form of email. We do have three reports this evening, so we'll start with the dual-language update. And to alleviate some concern, this is a report that we're being given tonight, there'll be no vote on anything that's on our agenda under reports.
I will introduce myself for the at-home viewers and the viewers here. I am Guadalupe Ricconi, I am the Director of Elementary Bilingual Programs for the school district. So when we met with the district the last time, we expressed at the end of the meeting that we would be waiting until after kindergarten connection and do a language application process to come back and give you some updates, as far as some recommendations on how to proceed with expansion. So that is my objective with you here tonight, specifically as it relates to the expansion of Spanish dual language, as well as the potential expansion and development of French dual language. And I hope that at the end, you know, through the data that I'll be presenting and the information that you get, that I can give you some recommendations as far as how I am hoping to proceed. So the initial slides are just reviews of what we discussed a few weeks ago. The rationale for Spanish dual language expansion largely has to do with the increased enrollment of students that we have, the projected enrollment that we have for, thank you, Dr. Owen, I mean, I like pink, but, or, Dr. Owen, I'm sorry, Dr. Woods.
Jim Bob's.
Thank you. We have the largest incoming class of kindergarten students who identify Spanish as one of their primary languages, so that was, we needed to come up with a solution to address that, first and foremost, in regards to Spanish dual language, as well as currently, the class sizes for some of our dual language classes are at maximum capacity. We have had to use TAs in all of our dual language classrooms this year, per Illinois regulation, that our class sizes need to be a certain percentage of the general average. So those were the two main factors that were behind looking at Spanish dual language expansion. For French, our numbers have had an increase, and have increased every year pretty steadily, as you As you, just a reminder, starting in '10, we had approximately 30 students, now we're at about 100. We are at a point that per ISB regulation, we do need to be providing more French instruction, whether that be currently at King School or at another site, we do need to continue to offer more French instruction per policy. We, I did meet with French families back on February 15, 13th, excuse me, and the representatives that were there were overwhelmingly in support of wanting more French education for their children, for a variety of reasons, to communicate with family from afar, to continue to maintain part of their identity. There were many factors that the families just really wanted French to continue to be a part of their home. So the last component was that, you know, having a waitlist of families across the district that have wanted to be able to engage in dual-language education, be that Spanish or French, as we saw from the Thought Exchange survey, we did have a portion of the district that was interested if we offered French and participating in that. So this expansion for both of these programs would give more families in the district access to educate, to this educational path. From the Thought Exchange, we did present three options, as we had mentioned last time. We had about 600 participants and a variety of different number of thoughts shared and ratings, so I felt that it was a really good representation of ideas and thoughts from the community as far as how they are like, would like us to proceed. Of those, we did decide, and we had mentioned last time, that we would not be pursuing Option A, which was one dual-language school for Spanish, for a variety of reasons. So during this past roughly month, I really did look at how we could look at exploring Option B and/or C, or a combination of both, in order to meet the needs of the ELL families in the district. So from kindergarten connection, and I have been diligently updating these numbers as registrations come in every day, we had about 53, we had 53 projected Spanish-speaking students that we were anticipating before kindergarten connection. Forty of those students came and have already registered, have already committed to coming to Urbana next year, which is roughly about 75%, which is pretty good for head count for next year. Six of those students have siblings in the district currently, so we're anticipating that they will be here, since they have brothers and sisters that are already in the school. The remainder of the students are a combination of local preschool centers and early childhood. They have been, families have been contacted directly by my elementary coordinator, and they have committed to coming in, to registering for dual-language, they just haven't gone through the process yet, which is fairly common. Historically, we have also had about five additional Spanish-speaking students show up at kindergarten, or at centralized registration, so we're kind of factoring that in as well. That's just about the average that we get, kiddos that we weren't expecting, but that we anticipate needing seats for as well. Of the students that have already registered, about 10 students identify French as one of their languages, if not their primary language, and they have already registered for kindergarten. In addition, we do typically at centralized registration have some move-ins as well. It's not typically as high as five, but it's usually a couple. For the Spanish dual-language program, families that submitted applications and want to be a part of Spanish dual-language were 37 families across the district. The majority came from Lille School at 18, so 18 students that have already registered for Lille want to be a part of this program. Nine from Dr. Williams so far, and 11 from other schools across the district. So my recommendations based on the information at this point, for Spanish, as I had mentioned, I do not recommend pursuing a dual-language school at this time. I am recommending, and have spoken with building administration, expanding the Spanish dual-language program at Lille to add one more kindergarten, as well as adding a split-level dual-language classroom for the intermediate to help alleviate some of the overcrowding in the upper classes, as well as expanding the Spanish dual-language program at Dr. Williams to add one more kindergarten classroom. Additional classroom will allow more applying students to participate. By having five dual-language kindergartens across both buildings, we would actually be able to not have a waitlist next year, which means that every family in the district that was interested in participating would have the option to enroll at one of the two buildings, which to me is great to have 37 kiddos that could leave fifth grade bilingual, biliterate, bicultural. To me, that is part of the mission of this district, is to provide services like that to the community. For French, my recommendation is to go ahead and begin moving forward with starting a French DL program for next year. As I had mentioned, we are required by law to increase the amount of French service for our families. In order to do that, my recommendation was housing it at Yankee Ridge. Through the Thought Exchange, one of the statements that repeatedly was mentioned was that we did not want to disrupt current class sizes or displace teachers. By utilizing Yankee Ridge and utilizing classrooms that currently don't have enrollment or staff, we actually would not be displacing, that would be the least disruptive place to put it, as well as through the Thought Exchange survey, that was one of the two buildings that expressed the highest interest in having French dual-language. So putting the program in a site where families are already interested and already wanting to enroll makes the most sense. Moving forward with that, my way to begin would be to develop a committee of stakeholders and community members that would want to work on program design for the curriculum in order to get that started. So the question regarding that is always, well, how are you going to staff these classrooms? Since we've changed to Spanish dual-language, we have had one of the easier times recruiting and retaining staff. Dual-language, as we have mentioned before, is what I refer to as the Cadillac of programs, teachers want to teach in it. And so so far this year, I have already hired two staff, which you have seen on the personnel list for approvals tonight, to help support the additional students that are incoming, as well as a vacancy as well. And already this week, I have more interviews lined up, I have quality candidates in the waiting, so if we can move forward with this, I would like to go ahead and get those positions in place as well. For French dual-language, typically if we look at beginning it, similarly to, that we did with Spanish, we could service the program with the staff that we have on hand now. That being said, I would like to still post for an additional French teacher in order to help with the projected growth, as well as providing support to the building through a French parent coordinator, similarly to what we have at Dr. Williams and at Lille, as well as looking into French interventionists, so that way we can also be providing support to students who need that extra bump as well. So are there any comments, questions? Yes?
Going back to the Thought Exchange data, was that percentage of responses from a given school that were in favor, or aggregate numbers? Because my concern is that there might be a much greater response to Thought Exchange overall with Yankee Ridge parents than, say, King parents. So it may not be indicative of the percentage of parents in that building who would be in favor of place with the program there.
So the data that was presented was given district-wide, so they did break down as far as the number of families or stakeholders in each building that were interested, but it was not broken down specifically, was it parent or staff? So that's something that we could ask the Thought Exchange company to break down a little bit more.
So when you finish with the expanded kindergartens, in particular, how many non-DL kindergartens will be in each building?
Sure, so at Lille, the projection is to have, to still have two, based on enrollment, and I know Spencer's in the room, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, and at Dr. Williams, it would still be two.
Two non-DL kindergartens?
Yes.
Okay. So there's physical space for that many kindergartens?
There is.
So you're talking, what would be the total number of kindergartens then at Lille?
But at Lille?
Yes.
That would be four.
Four altogether?
Yes.
And then five at Williams School, is that?
Yes.
Hi, and I, thanks for a good report, and it is exciting to think about expanding our dual-language options in the district. I also just have a question about the Thought Exchange and the French program at Yankee Ridge. Of the 100 families, the projected 100 French families, how many of them would be in the Yankee Ridge district boundaries?
So most of them don't live in the boundary of Yankee Ridge, most of them don't live in the boundary of King either. We just provide busing for the families to attend for program purposes. Many of the families actually live in Wiley Zone, but they're kind of scattered, but just like with Spanish DL, we provide busing service for our ELL students.
And I, and it would be useful to have the breakdown of, you know, who responded to Thought Exchange by type of respondent, you know?
Absolutely.
But, I'm sorry. But my other question is, Thought Exchange is a real valuable way for getting input, but is it the only way that your office solicited input to these big changes?
Um, no, we, between Dr. Weemel and I, we met with staff and PTAs at all of the buildings, and through the Thought Exchange survey as well, and meeting with the French families.
Okay. Because I guess my, you know, I mean, starting a brand-new program, while we know it will ultimately be an exciting kind of thing, but it does, it is hard to kind of ramp up, and I'm just wondering about the amount of input we were able to get from Yankee Ridge staff and administrators on, you know, can you guys handle this new program, given all that's going on in your building now? And the reverse of that, asking a similar question to King staff and administrators, are you, you know, do you recognize what you are losing by, when we establish this dual-language program in another building where, you know, from what you've been used to? So I mean, have those conversations happened in any substantial way?
So I have addressed the Yankee Ridge staff, I have gone to multiple meetings through the process to kind of present kind of where we are in the process and what my thoughts are, most recently this past Monday, letting them know what my recommendations would be today. I addressed some concerns that came up, many of you have mentioned, you know, within the current developments in the building, how would it fit in and how would it work? Similar questions and concerns came up when we moved the program to Dr. Williams. And through working, through my commitment, through Dr. Weemel's commitment, through the district's commitment to working with buildings and principals, and really making it an established program that is a part of the school, not a school within a school, really is meant to then unify the school as a whole.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that in-person discussions continue to happen, because, you know, the Thought Exchange is useful, but it is a kind of an impersonal way, and not everyone will take advantage of it, or, you know, maybe it doesn't reflect their, what, their views, and maybe their reviews are different from back in January, February, when we completed that, so thanks for continuing to have those conversations.
So Lupe, if most of the French folks live in the Wiley attendance area, and Wiley is currently an undersubscribed school, it's not anywhere near full to its capacity, and we're going to have a single French, I know multiple Spanish locations, but a single French location, and Wiley is so central in our district, is there a reason that you want to discuss at this point as to why Wiley wasn't considered?
Sure, so largely it was because of the Thought Exchange feedback. That was a building that had requests, had stakeholders that were interested. The other piece is that it...
That were not interested?
That were interested.
Wiley is interested?
No, I'm talking about Yankee Ridge, I'm sorry. Yankee Ridge was the driving factor because of the Thought Exchange survey, as well as there being space. So the Thought Exchange data did reflect that they, they supported moving and growth for dual-language, as long as it did not disrupt or displace staff. Doing so at Yankee Ridge wouldn't. At Wiley, it would require some restructuring and some movement in order to accommodate an additional 50 kids. Because the 100 is district-wide, the 100 number is district-wide. Specifically at King, right now, there's about 50.
Right. I thought we would be starting the DL program in French, just like we started in Spanish, where it would only be kindergarten.
So if we did not choose to move all 50 kids at once, which I'm open to the conversation, that would mean splitting families up, which is not typically what we have wanted to do in the district, because...
But we did do it when we started the Spanish program.
No. No, when we moved students from Lille to Dr. Williams, the ones that moved were ones that didn't have siblings.
Okay. But when we moved them from King, you're right, you moved all Spanish.
All the Spanish speakers moved out of King.
You're right, you moved all Spanish.
I mean, I'm open to having that discussion with families. When we talked about it, when we met with them, that was one of the questions that came up, well, how am I going to work that if I have one kid over here and one kid over there, and they really did prefer having them all together?
But we didn't move all Spanish children into DL. We only had kindergarten as the DL. So we only had the specialized teacher in the kindergarten when we started the Spanish DL program at Lille.
Yes.
Yeah, kindergarten and first.
For Dr. Williams, when we moved over to Dr. Williams?
No, when we started at Lille, we only started with two classrooms, kindergarten and Lille. We had other students, but we only had the dual-language immersion program
Yes.
in kindergarten and first grade.
And that is what would be happening at Yankee Ridge. The students second through fifth would not be in a dual-language classroom, they would be part of the mainstream numbers.
Yeah, and taught similar to how they're currently taught at King.
We would be looking through the Plating Committee, how?
Yeah, with pullouts.
Potentially, we could potentially look at other options as well.
Well, that's, I just wondered why Wiley wasn't considered, if that's where most people live.
I would have to get with Lexis, and I can give you the exact numbers as far as where they're located. I can tell you areas where they live, but I would have to look at the boundary map to confirm how many from each of the 51.
Okay, thanks.
I thought a majority of them lived over in Orchard Down area. The French, they're not, they've left there?
So Orchard Downs is for the most part university housing that is issued to visiting scholars, visiting residents. The majority of our French-speaking families are residents of Urbana, they are here.
So they're not in the Orchard Downs anymore?
They're not typically affiliated with university now. Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to talk about the split classroom proposal. Are there any extra challenges? I mean, I know that there are existing challenges whenever we do split classrooms at the elementary level, are there any additional challenges because it's dual-language? And is there an alternative to doing that and still be able to meet the numbers?
The alternative to doing that would be to add an additional third and fourth-grade classroom, which, based on the current numbers, the fourth grade isn't big enough to have two classrooms, it would make two very large fourth-grade dual-language cla, or, I'm sorry, two very small fourth-grade dual-language classrooms, because the fourth grade itself is not big enough to warrant an additional classroom. I'm in support of having very small classrooms, absolutely, but space-wise, it wouldn't. We couldn't do it at Lille where the kids are currently assigned, we would have to look at another site. And in the past, when we've offered families the option to switch schools, I would say maybe one or two have taken us up on that, because they're established in their schools, especially by fourth and fifth grade, they don't want to move.
I have a question about, you said that the Thought Exchange doesn't really separate out who's doing the responding, right? I mean...
It does. They just have not reported that test. We actually have an appointment scheduled with them to give us even more breakdowns that I'd be happy to share with you.
Oh, I'm curious to know what the staff at Yankee Ridge would have to say, the current staff would have to say about this addition, and if they were some of the respondents to the Thought Exchange, to get, you know, their stakeholder opinions on this.
The last time we were looking at figuring out where to expand this DL program into, we had staff survey data that was really enlightening with regards to the staff at, I think it was at Thomas Payne and Williams in particular, that was enlightening on how receptive those buildings were to the program. So that kind of data would be useful, I think, for us to help with this decision. I really want to commend you for reaching out and doing research with, and reaching out to PTAs and talking to different teachers communities. How long has this process in terms of the French language expansion, how long have you been doing research on this?
So I can tell you that we met with King staff on February 5th. I went and I met with them briefly to explain to them that the Thought Exchange survey would be coming up, that these were the options, that this is kind of be the impact. We, I would say the week before was about when we started meeting with staff, dual-language staff specifically, we met earlier in January to kind of talk about some concerns about class size and brainstorm ways that we could alleviate that, so.
Thank you. Well, since you, and I, I would, I think we need to keep Wiley on the, on the, on the list of possibles. My personal opinion. We've been, Wiley's uniquely located in the district in the central area. And if indeed you're, you're, you have a cluster of French speakers that's already in the Wiley attendance area, I would be open to looking at that as a possible. And if, I understand the movement of fifty is disruptive to any school that we move fifty students into all of a sudden. But in terms of staffing, I guess I'm still at the point where I thought we were dealing with, just starting with the immersion program only being at the kindergarten level. And so I look at that as an addition of one kindergarten or one, one staff person, not, not one staff person at each grade level. So I, I don't understand the disruption to existing staff or to the existing program, other than at the kindergarten level. Now, if we're moving all fifty students, then I, I probably have to rethink a little bit. But I just remember when we started with Spanish, it was, it was kindergarten and first grade, because we weren't able to put English speakers into a dual-immersion program at the upper levels. And I, I see you raving your hand back there, but, so am I- Microphone, 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 microphone.
Come on, Spencer.
Lille had been the site of the transitional bilingual program, and we were already fully staffed up through fifth grade. The, the programmatic delivery of instruction was different at second through fifth grade, but it still involved bilingual education. We had, you know, Spanish-speaking teachers at grades two through five.
Yeah, somewhat similar to the way the program is currently delivered at King.
No, no, no.
Where there's no dual-language.
More involved.
Well, it was, it was, it was bilingual instruction in the student's native language, in addition to instruction in English.
Which happens at King right now, and for the French speakers.
Yes, but on a limited basis. This was a full-school day that we were able to provide that instruction. So dual-language began at kindergarten and first grade only. A more analogous situation, if you're looking at just dual-language, would have been Dr. Williams, which then grew exponentially. But we were already fully staffed for K through five with bilingual teachers and bilingual support staff.
Okay.
Yes, currently at King School, we, the students only receive, by the time you subtract transition time from going from class to class, it's about thirty-five to forty minutes of French instruction, which, feedback that I get every year from my French staff, is that it's just not enough time.
I'm sure you get that sign, kind of feedback from the Chinese speakers and every other.
Absolutely, absolutely. The schedule at King, as you know, has always been a puzzle. I've been working with Ms. Lu to think about ways to kind of make improvements, while adding additional programs, like PE teachers was great, you know, for the district. And for staff, it did add another piece of the puzzle to the schedule at King. So every year, we're kind of analyzing that. But yes, our native-language classes have suffered in the process, so.
I'm just a little concerned about, Yankee Ridge is a construction site, and they're finally gonna be putting their school back together for September, and
Sure.
it's just a lot of, it's a lot of change. And also, every time that we redo a school, enrollment blossoms at that school.
Sure.
And so I'm worried about putting a specialized program that artificially puts fifty students in the building. And then, two years from now, we discover that the building is overcrowded, which is what happened at Lille, which is why we ended up opening up Williams. And so I, that's, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, maybe we need to keep two options alive for just a little bit more to investigate the impact. And maybe we need to do this similar to how we did Williams School, as opposed to how we did Lille.
So I think, I, I just want to clarify, because I'm, I'm hearing a couple things here. I think our plan is, we are planning to do it the way, introduce French DL the way we introduce Spanish DL at Dr. Williams. The difference in this is that the French-speaking families who have siblings will also be attending Yankee Ridge, so that we can concentrate the supports and the, and keep the siblings together. I will remind you that the board, we, we, we have eight classrooms being built, which will, one, we don't want them to sit empty anywhere. The number of French-speaking students going over would not fill two full classrooms. But understanding that, you know, Yankee Ridge is also gonna have some room to breathe, where we will, I don't remember working with Brian, the last time I did, and looking at his numbers, we were talking about ways to use those classrooms to break up some of the strands, add additional classrooms. We'll still have plenty of classrooms available at Yankee Ridge for, for that process, too, to, to kind of give a little bit of breathing room to the Yankee Ridge staff and students.
And as I had mentioned earlier, with the number of students that we have, we are far above the state requirement of providing transitional bilingual ed to French students. So if we did not look at moving anywhere, we're still at the point where we need to increase service, which, if we stayed at King, would mean potentially disrupting the current classroom designations at King School.
So Don, are you saying we can't consider Wiley as a, as a home?
No, no, not at all. I was just, I was just, I was hearing a difference of understanding in the way we were rolling out French DL. And I wanted to clarify that we're rolling it out in a very similar way to the way we rolled out Spanish DL at Dr. Williams. And because I, I want to make sure that that was clear.
Cause, cause I, I would add my support to considering Wiley as an option, part, you know, because it's very under-capacity. And, you know, I'd hate to be looking at a situation at Yankee Ridge, as we did at Lille and then Dr. Williams, where we were pushing five hundred and, and having to re-jigger around populations when we have a centralized location where many families reside, French families reside, and could handle the numbers without worrying about-
I mean, there, there were seventy, I think, around seventy new, new children in Yankee Ridge this year. So it's a pretty full building now, but obviously we'll have eight classrooms next year, but it's hard to know how many more are gonna move in.
And, and I'm still confused, because please, I'm hearing, I must be getting old, because I'm, I know I'm getting old. We did it one way at Lille, and we've just been told we did it another way at Williams.
So I think what's, what's confused is, I think what you were referring to, John, was the original move from King to Lille. So I'll explain that one first, and then the move from just Lille to Lille and Dr. Williams, because they were done a little bit differently.
Yes, they were.
So the move from King to Lille was everyone, all at once. And my understanding, that was before my tenure as director, but my understanding is that there was K-one classrooms, maybe K-one-two classrooms, established as bilingual classrooms. And third, fourth, and fifth, the students were in mainstream English monolingual classrooms and pulled out for content-based DSL
That is correct.
and Spanish. That's the similar type of proposal that's being made for French, is to move, develop a K, possibly K-one dual-language, instead of just the TBE, which was the original move to Lille, and rolling that up. But until we can roll that up, we still need, if it's second through fifth, we need the content-based DSL and French bilingual services in place wherever those second-through-fifth graders are at. So it's a, basically, it's a combination of the past two moves that we've made with the programming. The movement of K through five, like we did from King to Lille, and then the, in the development of dual-language at K-one for the coming group. So if you do that at King or Wiley, you need the classroom space to be able to create dual-language classrooms, which we don't have as much as we would have at Yankee Ridge, where the classrooms are being built. So what would lead to that is classroom-student displacement and/or teaching displacement, if there are not enough classrooms that are open, right? So you would have to displace a monolingual teacher for a dual-language teacher if you do it in a building that doesn't have open spaces already, unless it's through attrition, unless it's through retirements or those sorts of things. But that still means students would have to be moved in some, some way, whether it's out of Wiley or out of King to create that space.
Well, except in my mind, I thought that Wiley was severely under-enrolled compared to its capacity.
So I've, I've been at Wiley lately.
And I haven't been, so that's, it's my problem. No, 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 absolutely my problem for not being in the building.
There are, there are not, there, there's one classroom that's empty, and there's one fine arts room that's empty just part of the time, depending on the rotation. I believe that, or those are the only classrooms that are empty right now. There's one classroom that's empty all year. The rest of the rooms are used. There's one room that's empty right now temporarily, because it's the art room, and art is not part of the rotation at Wiley right now. So there are classrooms that are lower, there are some classrooms that are, that are higher as well. So its overall number is low, but individual classroom, it's only a two-strand still school, so there, the classrooms are all pretty well, pretty decent size that are being used. So even if we were to, even if we weren't to do dual-language, even if we were just to expand our bilingual program as the state mandates, we would still need space to create an approved program. We would still need classrooms. So that's similar to what we did from when Lille grew to where we needed to expand. It's no matter whether it's dual-language and we're including non-ELLs or not, we still need to expand. We have to. Whether that's just at King or whether that's at another school.
Well, the other thing we did when we moved all the Spanish speakers out of King is when we allowed many, many, many more neighborhood children were returned to King, and it became more of a neighborhood school. And so there's an impact here, two impacts that we need to consider, which is the filling up of whatever school, if you're gonna move all fifty to one school. That's also fifty children that are not in a school. And so it's the emptying out of, of another school. And so
Sure.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's in our best interest to move a block of fifty to a different school without us spending a lot of time. That was a time also when we adjusted attendance boundaries. And, and so, I'm, I'm, a block of fifty students is a lot of students for any school to either have moved out or moved in. And so that's, that's the basis of my thinking.
We could explore-
There is a natural advantage of you being the current
Yeah, that's true.
lead administrator at one of the buildings, too, in terms of helping to make things-
Yeah. We could put some more time in proposals, based on the couple of schools we've talked about tonight, and what that would look like for, in a variety of ways, as you're describing, to come back with some more feedback, more, more details.
Well, I may be the only one, and I don't want you to go through that effort if I'm the only one, so.
I'm in agreement with you, John. And the other thing is, too, we haven't really even talked about Thomas Paine. But Thomas Paine and Wiley are very close together. And I don't really know what Thomas Paine's numbers are right now, but I know at one time, they had classrooms, I believe, but I could be wrong in thinking that. I mean, it's been a while since I've been there.
It, it, I think it'd be just enlightening in, in overall to know the, the, the students in the district who will be needing French program, whether it's K through five, that, and in terms of where they live, what, what, uh, building would they be walkable to? Because there's, there's a number of, of blocks in this community where you could walk to multiple schools.
Yeah.
So.
And the English-speaking families that are interested in the program, too, where are they, where are they coming from?
Yeah, I mean, some of those Yankee Ridge families who are so anxious to have their kids participate might choose to walk their kids to Wiley if it were placed there.
Or the other way. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the team? Thanks, Lupe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have two school improvement plan summaries to be presented tonight. So, Don?
Yeah, so first up, we're gonna have Jennifer Rohn, who's the principal of Gerber School, and run through the Gerber's, Gerber School improvement plans. We are getting a weird color, aren't we, on the screen?
Yeah, a little tinged, but that's okay. Good evening, how are you guys all tonight?
Fine, thank you.
So, since I don't get to talk to you all very often, my slideshow tonight is not just about our school improvement plan, but also some reminders of who Gerber is, and also some celebrations of some great things that have been happening this year at our school. So just a reminder of our mission statement, we prepare our youth for independent and responsible adulthood through academic, vocational, and recreational successes in a safe and therapeutic environment. Some demographics and realities, these are actually demographics and realities for March, when we were, when Spencer and I were originally supposed to present. And they've changed quite a bit since then, as we tend to. In March, we were currently serving forty-three students, grades four through twelve. I believe we're up to forty-six or forty-seven now. Eight of our students are beginning to reintegrate into classes at UMS or UHS. We're always proud of that number. Our students are ones who have experienced some really extreme traumas in their short lives, and also little school success. So we have a lot that we're working with when they come to us. Approximately eighty-five of our, percent of our students at any given time are DCFS Youth and Care. And all of our students are receiving special education support. We have a very high mobility rate. At the time I made this PowerPoint, we had eight new students since Christmas break, and that number has now grown to eleven or twelve, two today. So the, the school improvement plan that we've been working on this year, we have two main goals that we've been addressing. Our first goal is an academic goal. We want our students to master an individually challenging curriculum that is culturally responsive, cohesive, and driven by essential elements. So things that we've been doing to work towards that goal, our teachers have been working on updating curriculum maps to not only align with our state standards, but also to align with our UHS and UMS course-like content, tagging on to those folks, so that when our students do transition over to those schools, they have greater success. And really also looking closely at what our student needs are. Those are ever-changing, as that mobile population changes. So we're really looking on a day-to-day basis what those students need. We've also been taking a closer look at what resources we have and looking at the implicit bias in some of our curriculum materials, and kind of looking how we can meet the goals that we've identified with better resources. We have a small group of teachers this year who've begun piloting guided reading programs, as many other of the schools in the districts are, and as the rest of the district grows in that, we will as well. And we've also realized that we have a very, we are blessed with a very large population of teacher assistants, and that we really needed to train them better in student data and academic interventions, and that that was a resource that we were under-utilizing academically, because we've got some really awesome people in those roles. And so we know that if we focus more on academics with our students, that they, they grow with us. And so if every member of our team is focused on academics, then we're gonna have greater success with that. Our second goal is a, a different type of goal. Our goal is that students will demonstrate positive skills for transitioning into complex, real-world settings. real-world settings. We noticed that many of our kids don't have the soft skills necessary to be successful once they transition over to UHS, or they transition on to a different community, or they graduate. They don't know some of those things that those of us with children teach our own children. And so, we have kind of taken a school-wide initiative to start teaching our kids some of those skills. So we started the school year with a unit on table manners, and with our fourth graders and with our twelfth graders, and we've been reinforcing that all year long. When we came back from Christmas break, we did a very lengthy unit on hygiene in all of our social skills classes, and that also extended into some coaching on relationships, including dating and sex education, because our kids had a whole lot of misinformation, and with their abuse histories, they need to know the correct information, and they need to know what healthy relationships look like. We're also hoping to continue to expand this initiative with more guest speakers and positive community connections with our kids. We've been doing that for several years now with our service learning projects, and we want to just continue to bring people, more people in and give our kids more positive community experiences as well. And we've also been piloting a high school consumer education and foods class that's really infused with experiences, going out and shopping together and working through a budget, and cooking together and using public transportation, some of those real-world skills that are going to be very useful to them in, in some of their cases in the very quick future. And that's been really successful. The kids have been really excited about it, and the staff have been really excited about it too. And so now, some of our younger groups are hoping that we can find ways to integrate those types of experiences for them as well. Some other good news, so when we, every year, our literacy interventionist picks a book for us to do an all-school read on. So our elementary through high school, they all read the same book in some form or fashion. Sometimes it's a read aloud, and sometimes it's more in-depth. So this year's book was A Long Walk to Water, and our kids got really excited about this book. This book is about South Sudan and water, and it's about the civil war there. It was a very, very transformative experience for them to think about the fact that other kids don't have what they take for granted. And so, we have a school club called the Cheetah Assistance that are social worker champions, and the Cheetah Assistants are our youngest guys, and they, this is a service learning club. So the Cheetah, Cheetah Assistants took it upon themselves that they wanted to do a fundraiser, and they wanted to help build wells in South Sudan. And, mind you, most of these kids are kids who don't have family to ask for money in a fundraiser. So, they set a goal of a thousand dollars, and they all felt like that was a very lofty goal, and they raised over twenty-five hundred dollars, which was amazing, and the kids were just glowing, it was super awesome. They'll be so thrilled to know they got a clap for that. So that wa, that was one super exciting student thing. The other super exciting thing that's going on, on our campus right now is they are building us a new school, Cunningham is. So if you haven't driven down Country Club Drive lately, please go see, there's been more progress since this picture. If you're not able to go to that side of town, check out the new Cunningham website. They are updating it on a very regular basis with new pictures, and you can see the floor plans. It's, it's a very anxious time for us as we're starting to think about how we're going to live in this new space, and a very exciting time. They're estimating that our construction will be completed in December, so potentially moving in Christmas or early second semester, which is where my anxiety comes from, but we're excited about new classroom space, new office space, a new gym, and new cafeteria space that's really designed to meet the needs of our population. And so, it, it's pretty thrilling. And that's Gerber. Do you have any questions?
Hi, I just want to say I like the therapeutic techniques that you use with the kids, the problem-solving, you know, I've been over there, but my question, are there academics still up? Because it was, when I was there, you gave them so many positive incentives, your teachers had very good rapport and interaction with the kids. How, from the last time I was there, have the academics been with those kids? Because you had a real good success story.
We feel very positive. One of the things that we struggle with is outcome data. So I would love to be able to give you some hard and fast numbers, but because our population is so mobile, it's hard to have apples-to-apples comparisons to give. But I will say, the group that we have right now is very academically-minded, and we feel, when we look at our behavioral data, kids are in class more, and they're, they're taking things seriously. And, and when I go in classrooms, and when Beth goes in classrooms, there are so many good things happening in each and every one of the classrooms, and, and Matt is always great at complimenting when our students come over to UHS, thank you, Matt, that, that our kids do well when we transition them over, and I feel like that's a, a great standard to go by if they can be successful when we, when we start that transition.
I just wanted to thank you for a great presentation. I consider your team to really be the unsung heroes of this district. You do a great work, and it's unrecognized by a large part of the community, so I just wanted to just make a special thank you to you guys. And I also want to make sure the UEA, who is talking about having board luncheons, to please include Gerber, because I'd love the opportunity to, to visit them again.
And we'd love to have you again.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Up next, we have Spencer Landsman with Lille.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow, I, you know. I don't anticipate having as much to say, or any, there's exciting things to say, although... So, our Lille's, Lille Continuous Improvement Plan for 2017, 2018 was focused on two main goals. The first one is our Student-Focused Literacy Goal. We want to make sure that all students will be able to read appropriate, complex text, and also respond with understanding across multiple disciplines. So, they're not just reading in reading class, they're reading in science, they're reading in social studies, they're reading in social-emotional learning, they're reading in math. And, that dovetails very well with the district's adoption of Eureka Math also, which has to deal with, a lot with students being able to respond and explain their responses instead of just doing calculations. In terms of the reading goal, you can see our desired results, and it's based on the continuous formative assessment that we do, both throughout the year, but particularly at the benchmarking periods. And, one of our goals is that students who are below grade level will make more than one year's growth, and, as you'll see in a moment, with the rationale, we'd like at least eighty percent of our African-American students to achieve or surpass the year-end benchmark goals. And that, that came out of our assessment data from last spring, last May, and it's summarized up in here, so white students in monolingual classes, eighty percent were on or above grade level, African-American students in monolingual classes, fifty-nine percent were on or above grade level, Hispanic students in D.O. classes, sixty-six percent on or above grade level, and white students in D.O. classes, eighty-six percent on or above grade level. So you could see there is quite a gap, and we saw that too, and that led to a variety of action steps. The major points are summarized here. Support comes from both classroom teachers and interventionists. All of the work the intervention is due is in addition to the reading instruction that goes on in the classroom, so students that are below grade level receive, at the very least, two doses of reading virtually every day. Classroom teachers, part of our plan was that they were to meet with their lowest reading group every single day. So, in some cases, there were students receiving three doses of, of literacy support. In order to make this happen, it, it was imperative that teachers and interventionists and teachers at the grade level in all the classes were able to assess their students, gather data, but then have time to discuss that data. So, the addition of the PE teachers last year provided valuable time for that to happen. That was during the school day, when teachers weren't totally exhausted at the end of the school day, to have those important discussions and to collaborate with each other and with the interventionists to craft the interventions that students actually needed. We were able to use that time to look at the data on individual students, on smaller groups of students, and figure out how to best meet all of those students' needs. And, also a big portion is that the students themselves need to know how they're progressing, as do their families. So those were the major plan points, there were other action steps. As you'll see in a moment, after I talk about the second goal we had for this year, we've been working at, looking at the steps we thought we needed to accomplish, and using the data we've been gathering throughout the year to see how to adjust those steps, and as the plan is called, it's Continuous Improvement Plan, so we're looking at constantly shifting and adapting and upgrading what's necessary. Our second goal was our Student-Focused Social-Emotional Goal. Guess I have to flip the side. And, this is my thirteenth year at Lille. I've always been a strong believer that an environment where students feel safe, both physically, and safe to take academic risks, to say, "I don't know something, I need help", is extremely important, and as a result, we have spent a long time, and I spend a lot of time, working on creating a climate where students want to be there, staff want to be there, students are happy, staff is happy, parents are happy, and that we have taught appropriate expectations and behaviors to our students that make sure they can be successful in that environment. So, our goal was that all students will have support they need to meet school-wide and classroom behavior expectations, and that all staff will teach and model school-wide and classroom behavior expectations. That's a continuous process also. It takes everybody to do that, and it's taken a, you know, many years to get to a place where we are at currently, where I think we do have such an environment. What we've been learning mostly this year, as we've worked through some of this, is that positive relationships are what make that happen. Positive relationships allow students to be able to say, "I don't know something, I need help", or to take the risks they need to try something, succeed, not succeed, but then continue to work at it. And so that's something we have been spending a lot of time on this year so far. The other area is that we do have some disparity in terms of office referrals, in that African-American students are referred at a percentage much greater than our percentage in our population, and that's something we wanted to work at. So these were referrals by ethnicity in 2016, 17. The blue lines are the percentage of the total referrals for each group, the green lines are the percentage within the school population. And, so, ideally, we would like there to be equality, which in 16, 17, you could see that forty-one percent of the referrals were for white students, and they make up forty percent of the population. I'm going to skip over a slide. And, so, in, this is data from 2017, 2018, through the end of February, which it has total referrals for both of those times, which are down generally, but we're looking, the important part is looking at the relationship between the percent of students with referrals versus the percentage of students that are enrolled in there. We still have quite a disparity between African-American number, percentage of students within our population and the percentage of those receiving referrals. Part of that is that African-American students now represent our fourth group, if they say whites being the largest, Hispanic, but also multiracial, and Asian students are, we have a greater population than African-American students. So we're, again, continuing to work on, on that. It fluctuates monthly, I did look since, again, this presentation was supposed to be last month, I, I see in that time, I, and I hadn't really done it before, I looked on a month-to-month basis, and it, it varies slightly month-to-month, but the, again, the small numbers make it very hard to, of, small numbers of African-American students make it very hard to get real large growth within that. The slide I skipped outlined our general three-tiered behavior system, which, as I said, is, we've been working on for a long time at Lille. You've heard it from me many, many times before, I'll, I'll let you read through some of those on their own. Ninety-five-plus percent of our students have one or no referrals throughout the year, and so the number of students we have that have multiple referrals, you know, is very small number for that, and it's because of the consistency at the tier-one or universal level, which reaches a large number of students. We intervene quickly when students are struggling behaviorally with tier-two supports, while they still receive the tier-one supports. they still receive the tier-one supports. And then for those students needing even more intensive intervention, those are layered on, too. And they're very individualized at that point. And fortunately, because we don't have a lot of students who require those supports, we're able to give them the attention they deserve. I will say just anecdotally, last month, we had no students with more than one referral during the month. So where does that get us? Because the year's almost over, right? So as I said, it is a Continuous Improvement Plan. And so at our staff development days, our building meetings, we've been looking at our goals and action steps through a racial equity lens. I've been trying to apply some of the things we've been, as administrators, we've been learning at our cabinet meetings, on five levers to improve learning, other tools that let us zero in on the things that we continue to not be making the progress that we would like to be making the progress on. Some are structural, some are deeper than that. And we've been trying to go through what we thought at the end of last year, the beginning of this year, were the things we needed to accomplish and see, well, why isn't that working? What do we need to do differently? And all of this planning will lead to, of course, next year's School Improvement Plan. During our monthly racial equity professional development meetings, which we have monthly, we've been learning to reach out to and meet the instructional needs of students and colors and their families. We've been looking at culturally responsive teaching. We've been exploring, what is it that we do that are barriers to those students? What is it that, what barriers we have to creating the kinds of close relationships with those students that have been working for us behaviorally, but that we also need to have that work academically with those students? So it is an ongoing and continuous process. It'll continue Friday at the Staff Development Day, and then continue May 11th also, and then at the Equity Planning Meetings with the School Leadership Team, once school is out at the end of May and beginning of June. And that's where we currently are. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Spencer. Could you just make it more concrete in our mind, just maybe give an example that might illustrate how, you know, your current focus on racial equity through your Continuous Improvement Plan and the monthly meetings, how some of your new actions might decrease the disparity in discipline referrals?
Well, at one of our recent Equity Meetings, we did an activity that's, it's been done at some of the other buildings, too, that had teachers look at the students in their class and look at how they divided them into students that are easy to work with, students that are more difficult to work with. And then we had them look at possible reasons why, what did those students have in common in each of those groups? And that was brought about by a teacher suggested, she was looking at her data and realized that some of the kids that were struggling most in her class were all from single-parent families. And that was something she had shared at her grade-level collaboration time, that having the P E fine arts, so that I could have all three of them meeting at once, had shared with that. And we said, that's, you know, interesting stuff. Everybody needs to be looking at that. Last time, we also watched a video about a school that did that with their whole student body at the beginning of the year. And everyone was really impressed by that. And so that's now on our plan for those first, the first-day teachers are back after the district day. Our first building day will be spent looking at every kid in the school. And the video we saw, it was, I know that student, you know, by sight, but I don't know anything else about them, or I know this student, and they do this, and this, and this, and I know this about them. And it allowed that staff, and similarly, like the smaller version we did with our staff for each of their classrooms, to really see, you know, where they had to devote their attention in order to create those kind of relationships that will help those students succeed.
Thank you, that helps.
I think that's awesome compared to when you, thirteen years ago, to now, what that you're using, because I wasn't really on board with you thirteen years ago, or maybe it was ten years ago. But I am on board now. I think that's what is needed. My only problem is, those kids then know that you all care about them, and the families feel then that you are approachable, because I have some that are very frightened, they are not being welcomed when they come, they don't know how to talk to you, they're young parents, so, single parents, so that's good. But then when they leave you, they need to have that same thing when they get over to the middle school and high school. And if we could do it as a district, that would be great, because you've probably made a difference in some of these children's lives over there at Lille. Because I don't hear anything about Lille. So I just want to thank you for the great work.
Thank you. But I, you know, and I think the district understands that, that it's those types of relationships with students and families, you know, that will make the difference for that, and hence the move to restructure, you know, secondary discipline policies and how things are dealt with. It's a long slog, though. I mean, it took many years to get staff to realize that you're going to be dealing with the students in some way anyway. It may as well be in a positive way, right, rather than trying to remediate something. Thank you.
Other questions for Spencer?
So I think this asked question was asked of the Secondary Principals, but first of all, I want to thank you for your focus on racial equity broadly with regards to academics and for student discipline. But what can we, as a board, do additionally for you to help you move forward on these items?
I would have to agree with Manette to say that, you know, this stuff takes time. There is no quick fix. There is no easy, you know, fix. It's different than getting a new math curriculum, where someone can be trained in how to teach those lessons. The whole foundation of PBIS is that it's not a system, it's not a program, it's a philosophy. It's a way of conducting yourself. And when I first started at Lille, it was fairly perfunctory in that way. It was, because it was viewed as a system that you could just put in place and operate. And it really isn't. So, you know, time and thoughtfulness, and time for staff to be able to think about, interact with, talk about, as in the example I gave, you know, Peggy, that may not have happened but for the collaboration time that staff was able to have, you know, with the addition of the P E teachers.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our third report is additional data on our secondary discipline data.
At the last meeting, several board members asked for some very specific additions to the data, and so Todd's going to present.
I need just one minute to plug my machine in, because I need to figure some things.
Okay. While you're doing that, we've got a long agenda, so let me go through the consent agenda while we're waiting on you to get plugged in, and then we'll return back to the secondary discipline data.
On our consent agenda this evening, our minutes of the March 13th, 2018 Business Meeting, April 3rd, 2018 Study Session, our February Bills and Checks, Education Fund Bills in the amount of $565,000, Operations and Maintenance Fund Bills in the amount of $162,000, Transportation Fund Bills in the amount of $394,000, Working Cash Bonds in the amount of $586,000, TORT in the amount of $44,000, Payroll in the amount of $4.4 million, and Adult Education in the amount of $103,000. We have also March Bills and Checks, Education Fund Bills in the amount of $593,000, Operations and Maintenance Fund Bills in the amount of $143,000, Transportation Fund Bills in the amount of $25,000, Working Cash Bonds in the amount of $419,000, TORT in the amount of $47,000, Life Safety in $350,000, Payroll in the amount of $3.9 million, actually rounded up to $4 million, and Adult Education in the amount of $91,000. There are no inter-fund loans, there are personnel items. Appointment of School Treasurer, Michael Kane. Appointment of School Auditor, PKD LLP. Approval of Sanitary Halling and Recycling Contract for 2018-19, Cleaning Contract Renewal for 2018-19. Resolution authorizing and directing the sale of disposal of personal property, which is mostly library books, and Athletic Complex Track Resurfacing Bid, which we went over the last time. And Don has suggested that 11.11 be kind of pulled back tonight in light of the input that we got this evening, and he'll readjust that and bring it back to us later. So are there any items on the consent agenda that we would like to have pulled?
I would like to have 11.04 pulled from the consent agenda, except for New Employment and Head Coaching Music Assignments.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
11.04, except for New Employment and Head Coaching Assignments, pulled off the consent agenda, but pulled into a separate individual item.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Does not take a second. One person's requested, it's done. That'll be an individual action item, then 12.04. Will be all the personnel items, except for the New Employment and Head Coaching Assignment. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll second that.
No, that's it. Oh, anything else that you want pulled off?
So it has been a long night, thank you, sir.
We're pulling off 11.11 as well.
Yeah.
It's being deferred until a later time. You ready?
Well, I was quite worried about the process, because we are already pretty dischamped everywhere, and now we're moving along.
As we always can, as always can, as always can. You can move the consent agenda. Any board member can individually remove anything from the consent agenda they wish without comment.
No, I was just looking at the 11.11.
Oh.
Yeah, I was talking about something there.
The administration has asked that 11.11 be pulled from the agenda, because of the input that we received tonight.
If a board member would like to do that on my behalf, that would be maybe appropriate.
I guess that's true. I guess that's true. The administration can do that. I will ask that 11.11 be pulled from the consent agenda as well. I guess we can make it an individual action item, and we can defer it at that point in time if you wish to do it that way. Our parliamentarian keeps me straight here.
Yeah, no, we've got to do things legit. Okay.
We'll make it an individual action item, and it'll, and I will, at that point in time, offer that it be deferred until a later time.
Okay.
Okay. Motion, roll call, please, on the motion for the Corrected Consent Agenda, which is the New Employment and Head Coaching only on the personnel list, and not including 11.11, which is the strategic plan timeline, for those that don't understand what was going on.
Can you say it again?
It's all the items on the consent agenda, with the exception of what's being excluded are personnel items that resolve around resignation, retirement, leave of absence, and change of assignments. Those being excluded. And 11.11 is being excluded.
We're excluding them, or are we making a motion to?
It's just been pulled off the consent agenda, and it will be an individual item.
The list of individual action items. That's according to the rules of our policy. Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Klosky?
Yes.
Member Fisher abstains. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Denver?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
We'll go back to our administrative reports, and we'll address the original action items.
With a little help from my friends behind me, it does help when the, you know, computer's plugged into the projector, so, which I did not do. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, tonight. Good evening. So just refreshing our collective memories, at the last meeting, Lynda Gibbons presented some referral and suspension information, broken down by student race and number of students affected. We did have a request from board members to look at this information again by total number of referrals at secondary, and that's what we brought back tonight. So just, what I will say is the graphs I'll present tonight are in that same format as those presented last meeting. And then as we go through some of these slides and look some of these graphs, just as a reminder, all of us, the data for 2017-18 is not complete yet, since we're not through the school year, and that data represents data that we have through early March. So we're going to look at some high school data first, and so, just make sure it's up there. We've got a nice pink tinge as well. Okay. So again, as I said, this slide is in the same format as the last presentation. What we have up on the screen here is the U H S Total Number of Referrals over the last three years, and then that's broken down by student race. And again, what you will see on here, if you were to look back at the last presentation, the pattern here is very similar, looking to the data by number of students. And again, this time, it's broken down by number of referrals. This again points out the large disparity between black students and white students in terms of number of referrals total at the high school in the last three years. Overall, again, a decreasing number of referrals overall, but that decrease is not going down as quickly for our African-American students. When you look at our actual, and so those are referrals, when you look at our out-of-school suspensions in the last three years, again, shows total number of out-of-school suspensions in the last years by student race at U H S, not number of students, but how many out-of-school suspensions there were. Again, data trend is similar to, very similar to, the data presented last time, where it was presented by number of students with at least one out-of-school suspension. And again, total number declining, but at a much faster rate for white students than black students. Again, you'll see that those numbers, ninety-five in 2015 for black students, down to seventy-nine and seventy-three so far this year of out-of-school suspensions. And for our white students, twenty for 2015, 2016, and 2017, and only three. So you see, you know, much quicker decline in those out-of-school suspensions. I'm going to talk about this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about this slide, Linda, I think, did a good job explaining the idea of this disparity ratio, but I'm gonna go back again to refresh all our memories. So again, this slide shows disparity ratios between black and white students and total number of, where we compare the total number of out-of-school suspension, percentage of total numbers of suspensions for the group population to that population in the school. As a reminder, a ratio of one, or close to one, would indicate an expected number of suspensions for a group compared to their population. So if 37% of the school are African-American students, and 37% of the out-of-school suspensions are given to African-American students, then the ratio would be one. The further above one we get, the more unexpected high disparity, the number, as we get further away from one, lower, that's unexpected under-representation. So you will see here, kind of a slight increase for our African-American students. What I would say is, again, the pattern, again, is very similar to when we looked at it by number of students as well. The numbers are very, very close. All right, so that's our disparity ratio for out-of-school suspensions. When we look at in-school suspensions, again, total number of in-school suspensions over the last three years at Urbana High School, you will see an actual increase in in-school suspensions for our African-American students, whereas we see an overall decrease, at least from 15, 16 to 16, 17, for our white students. Again, pointing out that over-representation. If we look at it by disparity ratio, again, very similar sort of pattern with an increase from 15 to 16, and leveling off 16, 17 to 17, 18 for our African-American students, and under-representation for our white students. And again, compared to the ratio for total number of students presented at the last time, trends in numbers are very similar. Looking at the middle school, this is middle school, so we're gonna look at the same information for the middle school here. Again, this graph shows the total number of referrals by race for UMS in the last three years, and again, patterns, you're gonna hear me say that a lot tonight, and I've already said that a lot tonight, very similar pattern to looking at the data by number of students receiving at least one referral, with a large disparity between black students and white students. For white students, you know, on this graph, the number are fairly stable, but we actually see an increasing number of referrals as we go into this year. Out-of-school suspensions, this is probably the biggest reduction, I would say, that we've seen for African, our African-American students, especially between 15, 16, and 16, 17. Went from 323 out-of-school suspensions to 110. A little, it looks like we have a little bit of a bump upwards again for 1718 for African-American Whereas, for other groups, there's a little bit of variation, but again, that, that, that pattern is, of disparity is still there. And very, again, very similar to when we looked at it by number of students with at least one out-of-school suspension. Disparity ratios at the middle school, a little bit higher here. The pattern is similar, the actual disparity, and total number of, when looking at, looking at it by total number of referrals, slightly greater on this chart than the one presented last time, but a very similar pattern. Numbers are a little bit higher. Looking, again, like we did at the high school, for number of in-school suspensions, where the number of out-of, so, sorry, for the middle school, again, remember we saw that reduction in number of out-of-school suspensions, we do see an increasing pattern of in-school suspensions across that time, when looking at total number of suspensions for African-American students, while most of our other groups see some variation, but not that disparity, and not that slight upward trend. And then, our last slide on here, again, looking at disparity ratios, see a very similar pattern to what we saw for out-of-school suspensions, where we have a, again, that larger disparity for African-American students over-representation than our white students, which have, who have a slightly, slight downward trend in the data. So, you know, I would say, in summary, I know we asked to look at that, I didn't, we didn't see big disparities, looking at the data, a little different ways, it paints the same picture, I guess, if I had to summarize on that.
I know, I'm the one who asked for this, and I know you put a lot of effort into it, so I would personally thank you for this, this has helped me.
And our middle school and high school principals, who absolutely helped us with the data collection on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions to Todd?
Can I just ask a que?
Yeah.
The UMS total number of referrals over the last, I'm looking at two charts, the UMS total number of referrals over the last three years, and UHS total number of referrals over the last three years. I mean, the numbers between the two schools are so dramatically different, I just wondered, are we, do we define referrals differently between the two schools? I mean, they're double, and, and, you know, and there's.
You talked about that a little bit, you might, you wanna talk about that? I'm gonna let Mr. Woods talk about that a little bit.
Thank you.
So the answer is yes, I think we define them differently. Five years ago, we made a decision that all instances of a student being removed from class would result in a referral, and we were using that as a form of documentation. It looks like this year, when I pulled the numbers, about 40% of our referrals don't result in a disciplinary action. They're documentation. Okay? So, it's still a lot more.
Could you give an example of what that would be? For example, that's not a disciplinary, but it would be a documentation?
Well, a student could have done, maybe exhibited some behavior in the classroom, it's concerning, we would wanna document that it happened, but we don't necessarily need a disciplinary action. I think I'm, I don't know that I was specific there. In elementary schools, they might, within Swiss, which is the data collection tool, code it as a minor discipline referral. In Skyward, we can't code it as a minor discipline referral.
I see, okay. So 40%?
Roughly. I'd have to double-check my numbers.
Okay. Don't result in a disciplinary action.
Yep.
That helps, thank you.
Other questions for Todd?
Thank you.
Or your secondary principal. All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you, Todd.
We'll now move to our individual action items. In the interest of time, I'm gonna zip through the first of these, or as many of them as I can, pretty quickly. So under 12.01, we have gifts. Venkatesh Yekarela of Urbana donated a three-quarter DeLuca cello and a three-quarter palatino cello, total value of $935 to the district. James E. Bangasser of Morton donated a three-quarter Rudolph Dutch cello. With two bows, Kason Kepeg valued at $4,000 to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Program. And the Urbana Adult Education Center received the following donations, from Paolo Roberto Barbera Lastosa of Champagne, $500, and from Donal, $100. We have two more gifts. The Urbana Middle School Band Activity Fund received the following donations, from Ward and Kim Gollings of Urbana, $1,000, and from Hussein, I knew how to pronounce his name, Sahiklo, I know him. And Sarah McElroy from Urbana donated $100. And then Scott Paluska and Nancy McElwain of Urbana donated $300 for the purchase of classroom materials for Manu Luca's fifth-grade class at Lille. Motion to approve the gifts would be in order.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion's carried. We need an appointment of our 2017 Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. Brenda has filled that position, to our great credit, for several years. I was hoping somebody would.
I would wholeheartedly second that.
Moved in seconded, draft is in order here. Any other nominations? Voice vote to approve the, the motion would be in order. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Brenda, continue the good work.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing demolition and removal of the house at 108 West Iowa Street that's been used for our special education program, and we've had some inspections done, and it's no longer suitable, so the program has been moved back to the high school. Motion to approve that bid would be in order.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, spending, roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pelosi?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Rollins Gay and President Dummer?
Yes. 12.04 is.
John, could I say something about that, just quickly?
Sure, you can.
I wanted to say thank you to Matt, because he helped us with moving our program in there, and our teachers could not be more thrilled with the facility we have now for our flex student students.
Excellent. Good.
All right, good. All right, thanks, everyone. Now, we have two items left over from our consent agenda, so the first one of those would be 12.04, which would be, I'm gonna change it, which will be, because it's gonna be easy to dispose of, which is 11.11, which is the deferral. The administration has asked us to defer action on the strategic plan calendar, so that some of the input that was received tonight can be taken into consideration.
Is there a specific date that the administration would wish that we would defer to, or just defer to some future meeting?
Do you wanna bring it back?
We'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, so defer to the next meeting.
I would move that this item be moved, be deferred until the next meeting.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Now, 12.05 would be the personnel items that remained, that were not included in the personnel, in the consent agenda.
I would also move that this item be deferred until the next meeting.
You can ask a question about the motion.
Yes. I'm sorry, I was busy writing, and I didn't listen to the last one, we just said.
Deferred until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting, meaning our actual next meeting.
Right.
And not the next business meeting, because we are in a business meeting.
Correct.
You see where I'm at right now.
Yeah, next meeting.
But the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay.
The study session.
Study session, okay, all right.
Is that clarified?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Moved in seconded. Oh, we already have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Already got a second, all right. Everybody ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign, motion is carried unanimously. All right. We have no call for any future special executive meetings, just a reminder that we will be meeting an exec session after this meeting, but there'll be no action following. Superintendent's report.
First, I'll go through the FOIA requests that have been fulfilled since the last meeting. The first request was from Lindsey Jones at the News Gazette, she wanted a disciplinary summary similar to data that is collected and reported on the Civil Rights Data Collection Report. Erin Bennett of WCIA asked for all emails to and from Assistant Superintendent Samuel Bindum that contain the words Dean, Black, or African-American, for the time period of February 1st, 2018, to March 1st, 2018. Erin Eads from WCIA asked for the current employment contract and salary for Samuel Bindum, contract and salary for Jennifer Ivory Tatum, for our FY 16 and 17, annual salary for Samuel Bindum each year as Adult Education Director, job description and salary for the following individuals, Cynthia Good, Jennifer Ivory Conway, and Chanel Caroma. Michelle McKembe Wiley, the Schreiber Center of Chicago, asked how many school resources officers are employed by your school district, and any agreement that you have with the police department that provides you with a school resource officer. Anonymous asked for any and all text messages sent between, sent or between the following individuals, between June 1st, 2016, and March 30th, that should say 2018, containing the words Dean, Black, African-American, circle, meeting, presentation, Board of Education, Urbana High School, or UHS, Urbana Middle School, or UMS, Tracy, or Welch, Restorative Practices, or RP, PBIS, data, or report. The individuals are Donald Owens and Elaine Spungen, Samuel Bindum and Elaine Spungen, Jennifer Ivory Tatum and Elaine Spungen, Matthew Stark and Elaine Spungen, and Scott Woods and Elaine Spungen. That's the FOIAs that kept us busy over the last couple weeks. I have the pleasure to talk about the Young Authors Celebration today. We had the district-wide Young Authors Celebration for 2018, and it was our 40th consecutive Young Authors Celebration.
Wow.
Kudos to Jessica Brown, who's our Professional Development Coordinator, who did a great job in her first year of coordinating that. And it was, as always, well-attended by parents, as well as students and the sponsoring teachers from each of the buildings. It's a K through 8 program from the Illinois State Board of Education, so those buildings were represented, and Urbana High School was well-represented by the UHS Drama Club that came and acted out 10 of the stories from our young authors. And so it was quite an event, the venue was very nice, and we had a great time. The guest storyteller is a gentleman by the name of Jim May, who's from here in Illinois. He actually graduated from the University of Illinois just a few years ago. He's an Emmy Award-winning storyteller, and he said to me as we were leaving that he goes to a lot of these, and he's invited to a lot of these, and this was by far the best he's ever seen. So, again, kudos to all of our teachers and Jessica for making such a great day of it, and especially our kids and the high school drama kids. Speaking of high school drama, the musical Into the Woods is starting next Wednesday. It runs Wednesday through Sunday, and in the evenings, it's at 7:00 PM, and then Sunday, there's a matinee at 2:00. Got it right. And then the last thing I was gonna say is something that we didn't get in as a report tonight, but I will be asking the board for their input regarding the site plan for the high school. You know, we had an RFP out, we received three responsive proposals to that, but because this is for a specific, a specific type of service, it's, in the past, we've done this as more of an interview, and so one of my questions to the board is whether you, not you want to defer this work to the facilities and property acquisition committee, which is John and Paul and several district administrators, or whether or not you'd like to have more board members involved in the interview process for this, in which case, we could set it up as special, special meetings, it would be open meetings for the, for the people to come in and be interviewed.
This is for the architect, the planner for the land use study?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, the campus site plan.
Yeah.
For Urbana High School, Urbana Middle School, the block north.
The developer architect?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to be in on it.
Okay. We'll, we'll schedule some, some special meetings, I'll have Lori pull the board when you're available, and then we'll reach out to these three companies and bring them in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll try and get that done sooner than later, too, just so you have that. Yeah, yeah. So that's it for my superintendent's report.
Board reports.
I would be regretful that I didn't mention our last board meeting, the death of Janice Bradley, who was a Thomas Paine principal. So, we took time to honor the student, but Janice did work diligently for our district and also within the community after she retired from the district.
Yeah, due to some mobility issues, neither Don nor I could make the meeting, the service, but we did have a district, kids sent flowers.
Yeah, that was great.
If you recall, that was one of those cold, snowy, springtime events.
We have an IASB dinner meeting on April 26 at Urbana Gardens, so I would encourage people to go. It's very informative to find out many things that's happening in the Illini District.
Other board reports. Three of us attended the, three of us plus Don attended the Schools Foundation event on Saturday night, and we had, and several other administrators, too, were there. We had a, an Urbana Business, Reynolds Towing, and a seven-time Emmy Award-winning news producer
Aye.
Oh, we're going to closed session, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Rollins Gay and President Dunham?
Yes, we are adjourned.